Okay, good evening. I have seven o'clock. So we will begin our regular meeting of the Parkway School District Board of Education. If you would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Unfortunately, tonight, we have no special recognitions in our current situation. But we do have additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda, which I will read. They are 6.01 modification to agenda item 10.03 approval of 2020, 2021 academic calendar. The dismissal times for half days was removed from the original PDF version of the document. 6.02 addendum addendum to agenda item 10.04 approval of personnel items. In 6.03 agenda item 10.06 approval of resolution to reset 2020 tax rate levy has been pulled to action. Next up, we have public comments by a number of citizens. We provide this opportunity at each meeting for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. Public comment session is not the appropriate forum for addressing individually identifiable student and/or personnel matters. Therefore, due to privacy laws protecting students and employees, comments about these matters should not include personally identifiable information about particular students or employees. Members of the public, staff, and students are encouraged to use established policies and procedures for offering suggestions or addressing concerns and complaints prior to bringing the issue before the board. Please be mindful that the meetings of the board, including your statements, are broadcast and that you are responsible for any public comments you make. In lieu of a public statement, you may choose to submit your comments to the board in writing. Also, due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting, so you will receive a response from us in writing. We are always available to have an open dialogue outside of our meetings and can be reached by email or phone using our contact information on the Parkway website. I will ask for your patience this evening. We, this is the first time we are attempting to do this virtually where we virtually welcome in public speakers. So we will, we will do that. And tonight, I believe we, we only have four people or maybe possibly five who are signed up, so we will limit the public comments tonight to three minutes per individual. So you keep your, keep your comments to that timeframe. That would be great. And then, once you're finished, if you would please exit the meeting as a, as a participant. And then you're, of course, welcome to rejoin the live stream, which is available with the link on the board's website. So first up, let me see here. It looks like I have Ryan Banta. Ryan, I saw you join the meeting. Looks like Ryan has dropped off. Is that, is that correct, Nikki? Okay, so next up, I have Tracy Goldstein. Tracy, are you on with us?
Just one second, Jeff.
Hang on a second there, Tracy. It looks like we.
We've got Ryan Banta back.
We've got Ryan Banta back. Okay, well, Tracy's microphone is unmuted, so we'll, we'll hear from Tracy and then we'll bring Ryan Banta right back in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Todd. Good evening. My name is Tracy Goldstein. I am a graduate of Parkway Central, and I have a child entering fifth grade who is new to Parkway. She came from a private school and begged me to leave because she was not having her social and emotional needs met in a small environment. For five years, I did not receive the benefits of my taxes. Furthermore, every time there was a bond issue for Parkway, I voted in favor of the measure. I have a master's degree in social work from Washington University and a Juris Doctorate from St. Louis University. I went to First State. For the record, I am not anti-mask. I am not anti-teacher. I am pro-science and I am pro-data. As you can imagine, based on my education, I am persuaded by facts and evidence. And for several weeks, I have sent numerous emails to Dr. Marty asking for one simple request. Please provide me with the evidence and medical data that was used in determining that the hybrid option for learning was going to be removed. My emails, when replied to, sometimes not, never provided the information and transparency I was seeking. Furthermore, and in an attempt to be heard, I have provided two robust articles to Dr. Marty that support the position that virtual learning for every child is an enormous detriment to the health and well-being of our children. The articles came respectively from the New England Journal of Medicine and the School of Public Health at Harvard. I will be sending those articles to each board member by the end of business tomorrow. I will continue to provide evidence that all virtual learning environment will be detrimental to our children in our school district. We must not forget, we are here for one reason and one reason only, the education of our children. We need to get our children back in front-facing learning environments, and that should be the only priority of the Superintendent and Board of Education. I expect the highest level of transparency behind every decision that is made regarding the education of my child. Today, when I was at work, I had the opportunity to hear an interview on Channel 4 from the Superintendent of the Wentzville School District, Dr. Curtis King. I was blown away by his confidence in his staff, the transparency he provided about the parameters, which will determine of the school, and most importantly, how he plans that if the circumstances would present themselves, that the school would close, that what the parameters look like about reopening the school and that the school will be open if those parameters are met. Again, I'm failing to understand how October 23rd is a metric and how arbitrary that is when quite possibly in two weeks, we may meet whatever criteria Parkway would use to go back to the hybrid model and then further into 100% in-person learning. This feels like an arbitrary date and pretty much says several things to me. First, getting kids in the classrooms is not a priority. Second, the Superintendent and Board of Education do not know how to plan to have a quick opening should, within two weeks, those numbers change. And finally, quite possibly, we don't have the confidence in our staff that within a couple of days' notice, they would be back in a functioning classroom. So now I ask you the following questions. One, why October 23rd? Two, when will the list of parameters be made to the Parkway families of what needs to occur for school to move to the hybrid option? Three, should we meet those parameters? Will the hybrid model be introduced prior to October 23rd? And four, if not, why? Coming to Parkway from a private school environment has really been eye-opening. I never realized the privilege that came with giving my child a private school education. When I thought about social justice, it was more of a movement and not this feeling I have today. I feel compelled to address a major issue that, that is that we're not talking about, and that is, what about the children with special needs? What about children that don't have meals? What about children whose parents do not have the financial opportunity to get them the care that they need so that they can be at work and their children can be learning? We have forgotten those children.
I'm sorry, we'll have to cut you off. Thank you very much, and we look forward to receiving that information that you mentioned. Now, I believe, do we have Ryan Banta with us? No? Okay. Next up is Sylvia Bowman. Good evening. Well, make sure you unmute.
Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Good evening, members of the Parkway Board. I appreciate your hard work and taking time to listen to parents during this important meeting, so I appreciate that. My name is Sylvia Bowman. I have a fourth grader attending Henry Elementary. During the last four years, our experience at Henry and Parkway has been extremely positive. I am one of many parents feeling concerned and frustrated about our children not being able to start school in person on Monday. My family, as many others, are facing very difficult challenges. In my own case, two full-time parents, no support system outside my husband and I, to oversee our son's virtual schooling. As you continue reading and listening countless stories of families feeling helpless during this pandemic and its effects on our children's future nine weeks, I want to focus on the communications between Parkway District and us, parents, as we move forward with the new school year. Unfortunately, the communication has been extremely limited, which has resulted in high levels of distrust, unrealistic assumptions, and what I found mostly disheartening, creating an us versus them situation, meaning parents versus teachers. With one group not knowing important and difficult challenges and sacrifices the other had to endure to make it through during the spring and summer months. I can assure you that lots of communication, lots of communication are never, never too much for concerned parents. Never too much. However, the message must always be transparent and consistent. It would have been beneficial to have an open and frequent channel of communication since the spring to prevent this difficult and uncomfortable situation within our communities currently. But it is not too late. So what I would like respectfully propose is to create a new open channel of communication between the board and us, parents, so we can all be on the same page, feel like we truly are part of one team, Team Parkway, working together in an open collaborative way to avoid further discord and misunderstandings so trust can be effectively rebuilt. We all have the children in our best interest, and I hope we can work from that perspective. I am one member of the Facebook group you may be already aware of called Parkway Parents for In-Person Learning. As of 6:30 this evening, there were 531 members in this group, parents from all backgrounds and unique challenges, all with a common goal to find a solution for our children to return to school with some level of in-person classroom instruction. So I respectfully propose to arrange a meeting between the Parkway Board and a representative group of parents to dialogue on our concerns. We have ideas. We have creative and safe potential solutions to propose and share with the board. We just need to be given the opportunity to play a small role in your decision-making process. I am hopeful that this can be a first step for families who can truly work their way. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I hope you heard me well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Diana Crossland.
President Todd, I'm not seeing her in attendance.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Teri Zubor.
Yep, I'm here. Sorry, add video here, I apologize. So first, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak and begin by sharing that I truly believe that Parkway administrators and most of our teachers want our children in the classroom in spite of the challenges that we face with COVID-19. My husband and I have two children at Parkway Central, an incoming freshman and a junior. When our family retired from military after over 30 years of combined service and chose the place to live, we chose Parkway. We chose the school district because we believed it would provide the best learning opportunity for our children. Right now, our concern is that we made the wrong choice. We have been told that the reason Parkway cannot even attempt a hybrid option for learning is because of the safety. And so I'm here tonight to ask, what safety measures is Parkway unable to meet? To date, parents have not been informed of the specific challenges being faced that have removed the option from our children to go to at least a hybrid option. The facts, the data, all point to the reality that if appropriate, safety measures are followed, such as mask-wearing, social distancing, and adequate cleaning, that in-person learning can be accomplished. In addition, the Parkway Return to Learn Plan does not provide a clear, specific guide that inform us as parents of what requirements must be met in order for a version of in-person learning to occur. I believe the members of the board and the Parkway leadership owe our parents or the parents of this district, the taxpayers, detailed information on what it will take to return and why these requirements cannot be currently be met. This lack of information leaves us, as parents, to believe that this is not simply about the safety of our children. As parents, we would like answers to the following. One, has the St. Louis County government given such restrictive requirements that Parkway is just unable to meet them? Two, is the cost, whether it be fiscally, with human resources, tech availability, et cetera, so unrealistic that you can't offer both a hybrid and in-person option? Thus, virtual was the decision. And lastly, are there specific logistical challenges that could not be met in such short amount of time to start the school year that, again, virtual was the option that was chosen? In closing, we as a community cannot come up with viable solutions. We cannot support you, the leaders of this district, without honest answers to the issues that we are being faced. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, I believe we haven't, we haven't had any that we missed that came back on, I assume.
No, I have not seen that.
Okay. So we will proceed with the remainder of the meeting. Next, may I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the special meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for August 19th, 2020. All in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, September 16th, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM. Next, board liaison reports. Anyone have anything they would like to share about their Parkway experiences this summer? Share about their someone just speaking, I couldn't, I heard something that I'm not sure who was.
I'll go first. Obviously, this is a school year unlike any that we've, we've experienced, and I understand that there's some difference of opinion of how we should be proceeding. But I, for one, today was a day that my kids found out who their elementarys and my teachers are. And, you know, it's, it's a different year, kind of year than usual, but the same excitement was there. My kids were thrilled, they're looking at, you know, calling other kids, see who's in whose class. So I think it's, we can learn a lot from how these kids are conducting themselves. You know, as parents, you know, we can get frustrated, teachers, administrators, all of our roles. But these kids are resilient, you know, they're making the best of it, and, you know, it's a good example for all of us.
I'd just like to give quick kudos to the, the tech department for the device handout efforts that have been going on. I think Saturday was perhaps a few more people than, than we expected to show up at the first minute on the first day. So kudos to that whole team and thanks for pushing through it and putting in some long hours and really just working hard to be organized and to make sure that the kids in our district have access to the tech they need to be able to participate in virtual learning from getting our hands on hotspots to making sure that everybody has working Chromebooks and coming up with ways to, to get those to students, even those students that, that it's hard to, to come and do that pickup. So kudos to that team and thanks for the hard work there.
I'd just like to add a thank you to all of our district staff because my, my kids also got their schedules today and they're a little older than Kevin, so perhaps the enthusiasm for going back to school is a little lower at this point, but I think that's a developmental thing. But I've been observing the incredible amount of work that's going on in this district right now, all summer. And I'm going to pick up a replacement Chromebook tomorrow. I know how hard technology has been working. My son is in marching band, and even though their practices were put on hold, there has been almost constant communication from his band director, keeping the kids engaged in that way. And I also have several personal friends who are teachers, and they are rising to the incredible challenge that they are facing this year. And I just want to thank every person who is involved in getting our kids back to school, whether it is in the way we all want it to be or not. They're doing an incredible amount of work, and I just hope everybody can recognize that we're all in this together. It's new for all of us. And just show the grace and appreciation that we need to be showing to everybody who is working so hard to get our kids back in school next Monday.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else?
I just want to ditto what Christie and Pam said. At the same time, the Equity Task Force met last week, and it went very, very well. There are great participants. They have great ideas and a special interest with passion for equity and Parkway. And I just want to compliment Dr. EJ and her team. The organization was excellent. It went off without a hitch. And the future direction of the team meetings will really provide for the opportunity to have equity in Parkway with recommendations that we could achieve.
Thank you, Sam.
I will go ahead and echo a lot of the comments that have also been made, and Jeff and I, Mr. Todd and I, meet weekly with the Superintendent and the President and Vice President of the Board along with an Ad-Hoc Director every week, and we hear the ongoing progress that is being made to ensure an e-learning environment that goes above and beyond what we had experienced last spring. A lot of our teachers, our administrators have been working long hours, doing extra development and ensuring that things are in order for all of our students. People are working weekends, nights, I mean, they are putting in the hours. So I just, I too want to commend our administration. I have every confidence that we're going to do as well as we can. And all of our principals that have been holding town hall meetings as well with our parents, that has been enormously helpful. I too have a middle schooler now, and so we've been on board with trying to get everything in place as well, and it's going very well so far. So in Dr. Marty's words, we need to stay nimble, flexible. I, I, I'm sure we're going to have some bumps along the way. I don't know what they will be, but hang in there. We'll find answers to questions and resolutions to challenges. I'm very confident about that. And I agree, it's not the way that we all want it to be, but unfortunately, it's the way we feel that it should be to ensure all of our students are being educated right now in a safe environment.
Tim's been real fast. I echo a lot of what's already happened already, but I'll add, and too with the graduations. It's only been two weeks since graduation, since lifetimes of the graduations have just occurred. But for everything that went through with that, trying to make it in person, not able to do it, going to the virtual, it was still a great event. I think the staff and administration really stepped up and made it a great experience. It went very well. It was fun, it was a different experience, but I think during the situation we had to deal with, I think the staff and administration did a great job pulling that off. Thank you, and I wish our 2020 graduates the best going forward. Hopefully, they're at college, they're gonna stay at college for a while.
Thank you, man. And I'll just add that my, my appreciation as well for the technology department for the endless hours that they, they have been and continue to be working to support our students and staff to get ready for next week. Our communications department has been hard at work trying to create as many tutorial videos and get those sent out to families. I know our social workers and food pantry volunteers continue to meet the needs of hundreds of families across our district who, without our, our support and that of the food pantry, would be in a really tough spot right now. So I appreciate their efforts. And obviously, teachers trying to, trying to get us ready, trying to get our students ready, their, their classrooms to a point that, that they can welcome students back and be successful teaching remotely. Our hats are off to you for, for accepting the challenge, and we look forward to, to hearing the successes that we no doubt will next, starting next week. So thank you. I know I, I, Dr. Marty and I have participated on a number of welcome backs, not only with our teachers, but with large groups of staff, staff, including nurses, and and it's just, it's, it's heartwarming to see everybody getting excited, even though we're not able to be together yet. But we are, we are all looking forward to being back together and we're working towards that goal. So we're, we're excited for that to be right around the corner. Dr. Marty, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, board members. I really appreciate your recognition of so many groups, the tech individuals, communication, and the principals and their work, and all the staff members and their preparation. So I know they really appreciate you as a board recognizing that, so thank you very much for your public appreciation, and thank you. I do want to mention that last evening, I had the pleasure to participate in the Special School District Town Hall. The Special School District has been running town halls with a format that they actually have ran out of their, their school, school district offices. And, and I participated, Bobby Fleming, Dr. Fleming facilitated the meeting. Dr. Matheson was also on, and Dr. Keenan was also on. It was about 125 of Parkway parents who were involved and engaged. They heard a report in terms of scheduling and work being done to make sure the IEPs are going to be looked at, and if necessary, some adjustments made to make sure they're going to be able to adjust to the virtual learning. So that was, I think, very well appreciated by so many parents. And then a, a long time for a Q and A, and Dr. Fleming and many of us, Dr. Fleming mainly did the answer to those questions. So we really appreciated, again, the partnership with SSD, and I know Mrs. Hopper, I know you are very much involved, and I want to let you know, we're very, very pleased with how they arranged this, and I talked to other superintendents today. I think it's been a great venture in all the districts in the, in the region. I also just echoed Jeff, Jen, I wanted to say Jeff's done a magnificent job of relaying the whole board's, thank you and pleasures. He's addressed groups, and I want to thank him for giving up time to do that with groups. And also want to say that this morning, a And also want to say that this morning a video went out, also information from Kevin Beckner and I, as Jeff mentioned, with the start of what we hope will be an ongoing resources for parents. We we truly believe and we've heard from parents who thought exchange what they need and we're going to try our best to close those gaps in information and resources. And so Kevin addressed, I think, three areas today, but we'll continue providing resources in that manner. So we're going to do our utmost to to help parents, help our staff and to, as we've said tonight, really be optimistic and positive about the work we're engaged in. Because we know it's going to be better and we're going to continually grow through this experience. And we're also going to be responsive to the needs of of our parent, of our students', social emotional needs and board members are aware of the work that Dr. Matheson is doing in that regard as well. So we're excited for the start of the school year. It's certainly different, but I am pleased and and very, very proud of our our staff and their reaction to start this school year. I believe that we're positioned, as well as any district, with our educators and our the staff that we have and and supporting their staff to get this off to a wonderful start. So thanks, Jeff, and thank again, board members, for your support.
Thank you. Let's see, we have no board subcommittee reports this evening. We have no upcoming subcommittee meetings to report. So next up is 10.0, our consent agenda. Board members have had a chance to review those over the last week or so. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented minus consent item 10.06 in the August 19th, 2020 board materials?
So move.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. Next up, 11.0, we have individual action items. We have 11.01 approval of the 2020-2021 comprehensive assessment plan. I'd like to welcome Carter Snow, coordinator of student assessment. He will make several comments about the comprehensive assessment plan prior to our vote.
Thank you. Sorry, let me get adjusted here. So good evening, Mrs. Stover, Dr. Marty, and good to see all the members of the board. I'm happy to present to you the 2021 comprehensive assessment plan for your consideration. Like every year, we believe this plan outlines a strong and balanced assessment system that gives educators the information they need to support student learning. For the 2021 school year, this plan reflects the increased need to be flexible, deliver assessments in an online format and identify learning needs that's quickly so that they be addressed when, in whichever setting learning is occurring. There's a few changes for this year's plan, which I would really like to highlight here for just a few minutes. In addition to the assessments detailed on the comprehensive assessment plan, we've been working hard to support and develop our teachers on best practices of online assessment and feedback. Through coordinator-led summer development, back-to-school development and additional support this school year, we hope to ease the transition to creating meaningful and authentic assessment experiences for students that provide valuable feedback to all of our stakeholders, whether in online space or in person. We've also made some adjustments to the calendar for some assessments to provide our educators the information they need to identify and close those gaps if they exist that result from emergency shift to online learning in the spring. And so, as you know, some of the assessments that we would have delivered in the spring couldn't happen. And so we want to make sure that if those assessments are essential to monitoring student progress, to identify students who may need acceleration or perhaps a little bit of extra support, that we have that information to guide those decisions. Additionally, we've made some changes to how we will assess reading, especially for our youngest readers. So teachers will assess students' current reading level frequently through formative assessments and running records through the reading instructional level. Traditionally, we've pushed out the Fonda's and Pennell assessment to students twice a year. And online assessment of the FNP or Fonda's and Pennell presents significant challenges. So in the place of the FNP, we felt that the shorter and more frequent reading instructional level measures will provide the needed information to students, parents and teachers to monitor progress. Finally, the optional ACT for the class of 2021. As you know, our senior class this year wasn't able to take the ACT with us as juniors in April. And so we're providing two options for our senior class to take the ACT that provides them with some flexibility if they need a score to qualify for a scholarship or gain admittance to a university or college of their choice. You may know that most, if not many, of the of the universities and colleges in our area and across the nation have made those tests optional for admittance this year. But again, if if that's a necessary score for a scholarship or college admittance, we want to make sure they have an opportunity. So in addition to providing vouchers for parents to sign up for a national test state administration on the weekend, we are planning for a weekday administration in late October with a focus on safety and following health and safety guidelines. Of course, pending the health situation in the spring of 2021, we still intend to offer the ACT to all current Parkway juniors. So those highlight some of the significant changes. Obviously, our teachers and all of our staff and technology have been incredible in thinking how we do this well, how we assess students and provide feedback for students to ensure that learning is happening in an online format. Hopefully, we'll be able to assess, of course, with our students in person this year as well. And so we want to make sure that our plan is flexible and meets every student's needs. And so with that, I look forward to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Carter. Does anyone have any questions regarding the comprehensive assessment plan?
I'll just, Carter, I had had a number of questions ahead of tonight's meeting, which all the board members have been included in on now. And I just want to thank you for taking the time to address the outstanding questions. Mainly, it was addressing the issue, issues in a virtual environment and how that will be achieved with the MAP testing in particular. So and with the EOCs. And so I really, I thank you very much for addressing all those matters.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Mrs. Hopper. You know, obviously, we still have some question marks for how we'll deliver state tests, both this fall and this spring, working closely with our partners across the region and within the state to figure out how we can deliver those assessments in a reliable and valid way. And that might mean that, you know, of course, they have a vendor for those assessments. And so of course, we want to be able to provide that and working closely with them to to make that happen. I should add that fortunately, we've been moving towards more and more online assessment, just as our natural course of business. And so we're in a position now where we can do this well. If it was five years ago and without Jason's help and teacher's help and all the coordinator's help, we might be in a different position. So you know, there's fortunately, we're in a, we're in a good place to kind of move forward with online assessment.
Anyone else? Okay, may I have a motion in a second to the Board of Education to approve the consent, approved by consent, the 2020-2021 comprehensive assessment plan is presented in the August 19th, 2020 board meeting materials?
Second.
Thank you. Would you please call roll?
Ms. Davis?
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler? Dr. Siratino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next, to support the comprehensive assessment plan, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve ordering materials and scoring services for the following assessments. The Missouri Assessment Program MAP estimated at $30,000. The Negliary Nonverbal Ability Test estimated at $16,000. The Missouri Assessment Partnership estimated at $15,000. ACT State and District Testing estimated estimated at $61,425. And the launch ACT training and materials through Princeton Review estimated at $15,000. These funds would come from the 2021-2021 Assessment Program budget in total $137,425. The funds for the AP exam estimated at $254,900 will come from Parkway's high school activity accounts.
I move.
Second.
Well, call please, Nikki.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler? Dr. Siratino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer? Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next item is the item that was pulled to action, which is the approval of resolution to reset the 2020 tax rate levy. I'd like to invite Patty Bedborough to, who's our chief financial officer, to join us to give us a brief overview. And she is joined by Mike Bogus, Kim Cohen and Brian Whittle. Welcome all.
Hello, is this, sorry, my computer just went into a respin. Are we on the resetting of the tax rate?
Yes.
All right, awesome. So this is a component that we as Parkway have the opportunity to do on every even year. In 2007, our voters approved a proposition that increased our tax rate. Since that time, we have had a voluntary rollback on our residential rate. Each non-reassessment year, which is an even year, we are allowed to reset our voluntary rate. It provides us flexibility in our financial planning and it sets ahead for the tax rate for the future as well. In this future year, we do plan to utilize part of the voluntary rollback, which we are allowed to do without a vote of the public. A portion of this will be used and levied on our residential rate in order to make up for some of our lost revenues from the financial institution tax. So it is approximately 9.6 cents of the 24 cents that is estimated that was rolled back two years ago. Any questions?
Okay, no one has any questions. Thank you very much, Patty, for that explanation.
You're welcome.
So next, may I have a motion in a second to the Board of Education for the Parkway School District for our 2020 tax rate calculation? Resolve to reverse the voluntary rollback on the operating levy for the Parkway School District. This includes any and all voluntary rollbacks from the residential, commercial, personal property and/or the agricultural tax levels. This change will allow for flexibility in our use of funds and to otherwise meet our operating revenue goals.
Second.
Well, call please, Nikki.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler? Dr. Siratino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. We have no policy review tonight. We have no reports tonight. We do have a work session, which is agenda item 14.0. So all of the, all of the people who just joined us with Patty will provide a financial update for us. So it is turned over to you.
Mr. Brooks, will you share the ability for me to present my screens?
Yeah, yes, just a second, please.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Did the presentation come up? I can't see it on my.
Yes.
Yep. Patty, I'll go ahead and let you start and I'll drive.
Thank you very, very much, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. Tonight, we wanted to provide you not only a financial update for the district, but part of the impact, an overview of the impact of the economy and some of the future trends that we are concerned about. And then some ideas for our future planning as well, that we balance our financial concerns along with the needs of our students and of course of our staff as well. So first, if we can reference the fiscal year 20 that we just finished in June 30th, included in your board packet was our preliminary ASBR Annual Secretary of Board Report, which is the basis for our financial statements for the fiscal year that we just ended. We did complete the year at a very healthy finish. We had a collection rate that was over 98%. That on our local taxes, that has not been done in several, several years. We had very few payments back to our settlements of previously protested taxes that, of course, led the way to our collection rate along with a collection of a lot of uncollected taxes from the prior year. Some of the negatives that we have experienced are diminished state funding. So not only in the state formula, we were withheld not only in June, but also we were withheld in July. We also had lower than budgeted proxy revenues, which is our statewide sales tax numbers that we received for last year. And then when we came into the budget for this year, we actually projected at that lower rate. We also had reduced funding in transportation funds, just to to name a few. Some of our own knowns that we are facing for this future year is certainly the worry about uncollected property tax. So we know as the economy was shut down and now is recovering, we may have several businesses that have either moved, relocated, or unfortunately may have closed. We also know with the ability to work from home, most of us, you know, almost forced to do so. But with that, you know, many businesses, if they have a renewal of a new, of a lease, may choose to have a smaller office space and have more employees working from home. So we are looking at a 96% or 96.2% collection rate when we're looking at our budget for this year and future years. We also know with the Family First Act, it provides leave and pay for all of our employees in the case that they're caring for someone with COVID and caring for a child that perhaps their their school is closed. So at this point in time, we know that we're going to have an escalated sub-cost rate. At this time, it is rather difficult for us to project exactly how how high that's going to impact us. And then, of course, our PPE. So we have geared up for in-person learning with masks, hand sanitizer, Plexiglas for front office areas, et cetera, and additional cleaning supplies for our custodians and hand sanitizer to go on to all of our buses and be available to all of our nutritional services, service lines as well. So with that, we do know that we're going to have some funding reimbursed from the SEMA grant. But at this point, we don't know exactly which expenditures will be covered and which ones won't. But our major concern truly is the future of our property taxes. I'm going to show you in a few slides historically, our trends from the last recession. And Brian's actually going to take us back to a few recessions and show you some of our trends as well. Here is a breakdown of our assessed valuation history, a very familiar slide for all of you that is always presented to you with our, our budgets and our updates. But one trend line I do want to point out here is from our last recession, the Great Recession two thousand eight, you can see that our, our cess valuation decreased and it took literally until twenty eighteen for that to recover. We're hopeful that this recession will not take that long to recover from. But of course, that's still yet to be determined. We know some of the unemployment numbers are rebounding. So it, it seems like some of the economy is rebounding quickly. But we all know that it's going to take a while for this to actually be firmed up and mapped out. Along with assessed valuation, because assessed valuation is, is tied to our largest revenue source, which is our, our local taxes. We know that when they are in a decline, while we can roll up our tax rate to have the same amount of revenue, it is really difficult to have a increase in that revenue level. So as you can see, beginning in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, in the blue lines, you can see that we had a very steady mild increase in our revenue in those years. However, we did not cut back our spending in time. So that caused the gray line, which represents our fund balance or kind of like our cash reserves for the district, literally to take a ski slope approach and, and dive. Because of that, we actually had to go through some major budget cuts in nine, ten, eleven, and twelve fiscal years in order to start that recovery. And as you know, over the last six years, we have had a definite fund balance growth policy that we have adhered to, that each time that we budget, we budget for a minimum of a point two five percent fund balance growth for each year. So we are gradually meeting our targets. We do predict for this current year, which is fiscal year twenty twenty one, that we will actually have our first year in several, that we will not need to borrow our tax anticipation notes. That is a huge victory for all of us and really for every employee, because it takes all of us to make this all happen. What we want to take from this is we want to make sure that we're planning for the future as well, that we do not put ourselves back into those deep budget cutting times again.
All right. So this chart shows us, it compares our fund balance with the orange line compared to annual GDP. And the red columns are when we had a recession, you know, it was two quarters in two thousand and one, essentially a year and a half starting two thousand and seven and now. And I know it's only two recessions in the history we have to look at, but you can tell it takes about two years after the recession begins before we go be below that black line. That means we're not having fund balance growth of the point two five we want. There's a lot of reasons for that. Primarily, it's, it takes a little bit because the reassessment has to kick in, which would then lower our values. Collection rates slowly go down, as Patty mentioned. A one percent drop in collection rate is two million dollars. So you have a two percent drop of four million in that. And even in a good year, we would never expect to have a four million surplus. So a one to two percent drop in collection will throw us below that zero in many years. And I think Patty has done a great job planning when we budgeted of starting with a, she lowered our collection rate. She didn't think we were going to have ninety eight percent again. We were actually looking at ninety six point two for this year and next year currently. And the other big impact that takes a few years to roll down is subsequent settlements from protested taxes. All right.
So what does this mean for Parkway? As we mentioned, we lowered our collection rate to the ninety six point two percent. We're also using very conservative CPI growth rates. And what CPI is, is our Consumer Price Index. So any reassessed value, so like property that was assessed previously and reassessed in a future year. So our next year for reassessment is our tax rate of twenty twenty one, which is our next fiscal year, and that is twenty twenty two. We've estimated that the economy would be a slower growth and a point five percent increase. And then the future year from that, a point two five percent increase. So very low growth on existing property, a conservative collection rate. And then we've also looked at Prop C only growing by a five dollar per year per weighted ADA growth. So certainly, any of these markers can change, but we wanted to be conservative in our approach. When we were budgeting for this current year, so fiscal year twenty one, in the spring, when we were putting everything together, we, as our Superintendent's Action Team collectively came up with budget cuts of over one million dollars. So that is already included in our current year budget. But as we get closer to our, our next year and budget planning, we may have to recognize and reduce up to five point eight million dollars. So for the point two five percent growth increase in our fund balance, our current estimates would need five point five million, seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in reductions. If we wanted to flatten that to just a zero percent increase in our fund balance, it would still need additional reductions of five point two million dollars. So the reductions at this point may vary based on our revenue collections, but we wanted to be conservative in our approach as we move forward.
So with that information, it really becomes a balancing act. Our financial due diligence, you know, looking into the future and what is best for our employees. So, you know, when we went into virtual last March, all our employees were paid, but not all the job classifications were able to complete job duties remotely. And so for us, for next steps, starting this school year virtually, we needed to have the conversation of furloughs versus voluntary furloughs. And so numerous options regarding unrequested leave of absence, which is a furlough, were examined. And we looked at it by tier at the job duties and separated them into different classifications. And so I want to kind of go through those with you individually. So employees that can perform their job duties remotely were put in one classification for those, now that we're virtual. Employees that cannot perform their job duties remotely, but can be repurposed easily, were put in another classification. Employees that cannot perform their full range of duties remotely and cannot be repurposed easily was the third tier. And then we also looked at employees that could possibly benefit from the unemployment pay and the federal lost wage grant. It's important to note that once we decided as a district, we were going to go a hundred percent virtual, HR did put a hold on open positions that fell into that third tier. Again, those employees that cannot perform their full range of duties remotely and cannot be repurposed easily.
Sorry, let me, so this is just an example of the voluntary furlough unemployment calculation. We're giving two employees tomorrow. This is a very simplified version of it. But if we look at someone, you know, if they have an average weekly salary of four hundred dollars, roughly six and a half hours a day and twelve dollars an hour is roughly the average for that group. And then if we look based on that weekly salary, they would get a hundred ninety one in Missouri unemployment, but the federal addition of three hundred, the total unemployment is four hundred ninety one. So they would get more from unemployment. Um, this is a simplified version of what we're going to give to employees tomorrow. They'll see a, how we calculated that unemployment or give them the four quarters of data so they could go on the Missouri website themselves and check it, especially if they have a secondary job. The points of consideration, like if you take a voluntary furlough, you're not going to get service credit for PSRS or social security. So that might, you know, that this equation kind of comes up and shows you're going to break even or get twenty or thirty more a week. You might say, well, that's not worth it compared to my service credits. So our, the hope is that we're giving enough information for employees to make an educated decision. We do say these are all examples and the, based on the information we have. But I think we, all four of it looked at it, what would we need in this situation to make a decision like this? Now, if we, if everybody that we're offering the voluntary furlough to, that would have, would be better off on unemployment on a strictly dollar level, you know, on a weekly take home. If twenty five percent take it, we'd save two hundred and seventy five thousand approximately. Half of them, it's five hundred and fifty, a hundred thousand, one point one million, and it's based on October sixteenth return date. I can tell you, we have no idea what the number is going to be. I think twenty five or fifty percent might be reasonable. You know, I, when you make a decision like that, sometimes you go with what you know and what's safe. And that's keeping the status quo and I completely get that decision. And in a lot of these cases, I'd be tempted to make it myself. So I guess we'll know in about a week how many people are going to take it. And this was our list as of Monday of who was going to get the voluntary furlough notices. It's roughly six hundred and ten people we're offering it to. And on a strictly just take home dollar payment, it's five hundred and thirty six that would be better off. And again, like I said, that five hundred and thirty six, they may look at their own decision or circumstances and decide differently. I mean, and then today we knocked, our four people retired, so we lowered it by this number of six hundred and nine by four. And then it's probably about five hundred and thirty and six hundred and, six hundred and five letters with about five hundred and thirty people roughly that will be better off on a dollar amount, taking the unemployment or voluntary furlough.
So here we have the immediate timeline, what we've been kind of working on behind the scenes. And I think the, the factor that's come through, throughout is that this is all pending board approval. So we're trying to move quickly while also allowing people to have the background information that they need to make a very informed decision. So we know that as of August seventeenth, Missouri had approved the three hundred weekly for the federal lost wage grant. Now, as of today, we're understanding that there might be more than that three hundred, but all figures that Brian will be presenting everyone with tomorrow is based upon three hundred and, and no more. Yesterday and today, we were emailing and making phone calls to employees, informing them of in-person FAQ meetings that will be coming up. Just wanting to really make sure that this is a process where we're wrapped around our employees and providing them with support throughout the process. Tomorrow morning on the twentieth at seven thirty, an email will be sent to each employee, breaking down their unemployment wages. And Brian very much so understated the amazing work he has done on this mail merge that will go to each employee. The slide that you saw, I think two or three slides ago, we just touched on the information that is shared. I mean, he breaks down the PSRS peers and FICA withholdings, you name it, and it's in there. There's, there's no surprises to come later. I mean, that, that is the goal of that. We, we know that on August twenty fifth, the board will vote on this. And if they vote to allow for this voluntary furlough option, we will hold meetings then on the twenty fifth in the afternoon. And the twenty sixth, then what those meetings are going to really do is allow us to talk about the, the options that people have been presented with and really weigh out, you know, is it in their best interest? We don't want employees taking a furlough if it's not really in their best interest. And we know this slide that Brian just showed is very much a numbers slide. But we also know that there are people attached to these numbers. And we know that whereas on paper, five hundred and thirty six of them are going to benefit from this furlough, we don't know the, the livelihood and the story behind those that it's not showing to benefit. We don't know if they have children at home. We don't know those extra pieces. So that's why we want to make sure that we're offering it to the entire group instead of just to the people that, that we feel will benefit. We are asking that we have them accept or decline furlough packages by the twenty eighth at noon. And then all employees will apply for furlough with a start date of the thirtieth. And we will, a part of our, our package and our FAQ meetings is not just FAQs, answering those questions that we've been getting very frequently, but it's also the resources behind it, how to support someone through the process of filing for unemployment, the weekly check-ins, all of the, all of the other pieces that come along with it.
Thanks, Kim. So as Kim shared, a lot of the information regarding the month of August in this slide. But in September, we really want to assist employees who choose the voluntary furlough with unemployment filing and questions. Also, in the month of September, the district's going to need to decide what second quarter looks like of either in person or continue with virtual. Because on October second, we hope to review the return date for furloughed employees, which right now on a voluntary furlough would be set for October nineteenth as a return date. But if we're not returning to in person, we need to decide on a continuation of that voluntary furlough. And so kind of next steps is just looking at a return to work date. But again, the original thought for the return to work date would be October nineteenth as that ends a pay cycle and we can get employees back in and working towards second quarter, the beginning of second quarter and getting ready for that for students.
And with this, I know a few slides earlier, we showed the, the balancing between the fiscal responsibility and then caring for our employees. So we want to just really wrap this up and, and really let you know that we've, we've worked through many, many different options. And we've come to the conclusion that for right now, this is our recommendation for the board to consider. This helps some of our employees. It actually allows them to benefit from some of the federal incentives that are available right now. It also is a way of us caring for the future of our students as well, because anything that we can save now and goes into our fund balance actually helps our students in the future and our employees in the future, because it, it potentially is less that we have to reduce from perhaps direct instructional materials or employees in the future as well. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, first off, thank you very much for the comprehensive overview of all of that. It's a lot to take in, a lot to consider, certainly. And, and we'll continue to, to ask questions probably that'll, that'll come up in the next couple of days. But just off the top of my head, what, what happens if an employee, you know, what if they're on that, that bubble? If they're, you know, they only make twenty dollars more or whatever, there's not a big incentive or not big advantage to them. Do they, do they just sit home? Do they, are they expected to work when there's work to be done? How's that, how's that work?
Kim, you want to go ahead and answer that?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. Ideally, when we're looking at smaller numbers of people, we would hopefully be able to repurpose them. The, the furlough package does state that they could be used within another main within Parkway. So ideally, yes, we would be able to, to utilize them in some way, shape or form, maybe not daily, but on an as needed basis.
And I trust that our communications have reinforced that this is definitely a voluntary thing. This is not something we're imposing on anyone to make, you know, to make that decision.
And I think you touched on something very important. You know, if it is twenty dollars in, in my, in my world, I probably wouldn't take the voluntary furlough for that amount. But then again, there's that human element to where we don't really know what's happening in their life. And if it might benefit them, because you know, for, for the difference of twenty dollars, they can also stay home with their child or their grandchild. So there's so many different factors that come into play here. But yes, that will be a part of our FAQ meetings and our resource meetings, sharing that this is, this is completely your choice to make at this time. And we are not strong-arming anyone into making that decision.
And if I could also add to that point, sorry, is that all of these calculations are based on the three hundred dollar federal incentive, if, if you will. Today, there was an article that came out that Governor Parsons is considering the additional one hundred dollars that Missouri could also supplement to make that four hundred dollars a month or week, sorry. So, you know, perhaps by the time that we have the in-person meetings, we may know more on that situation as well.
Mr. Todd, one of the things, just to add real fast to the, the last slide of the cares. You know, when we look at voluntary furlough or if we look at furlough with the unrequested leave of absence, you know, we're looking to see how we can help employees. One of the reasons you know, we we're looking to see how we can help employees. Uh, one of the reasons for this timeline to be, it looks very short, uh, and that is if we can do the paperwork and assist for the um August thirty-first uh timeline, our employees that have worked uh will get a paycheck from Parkway on August twenty-eighth and again on September eleventh for time worked uh up to that point. And so if there is a delay in uh a check received, if they do decide to do the voluntary furlough, we wanted to do everything we could to make sure that if they were uh waiting on a check, they weren't uh put without money, that they would actually get a paycheck on from Parkway for the work they have performed up to that point. Sorry, Debbie, I think.
No, that's okay. I'm I either missed it in the presentation, um, but I you're, I think it's important to just reiterate that employees keep their benefits during this period of time as well, correct? That's still on the part of the plan.
Absolutely. So they'll if they are already on benefits and benefit eligible, they will remain on our our health, dental, vision, um, long-term disability in life programs as well. And that is clearly stated in all of the materials that Kim and Brian have developed.
And what about keeping their position?
Correct, correct.
Okay. No, is any any taxes, does any taxes come out of a federal benefit?
Income taxes do.
Income, that's okay.
State and federal, and we'll make sure to tell people that, because when you have lacked unemployment, you may not select that option to have federal taxes without, and then that would come back to bite them in April, because, you know, they still have their wages from this job this year. So they would end up being over that threshold where they don't income taxes, but uh.
Oh, no retirement then from the district or the employee, right?
No, you have no PSRS and then no social security and Medicare.
Okay.
With the exception, we do have to um withhold the retirement on the benefit portion that we pay for the employee-only portion. So that would be like fifty-one, twenty-one, was it per month, Brian? Correct. So we would would have to collect that from the employee.
So we we put that number on the letter as well as, you know, if you cover your spouse, you know, I cover my spouse and kids, so I have something come out every, you know, half that cost comes out of my check every two weeks. So we would also have to bill employees for that. Um, a lot of this group is used to that billing, because we do it for the year, the summer when they're not here. But we put the dollar amount of how much that is a month plus the fifty so they can decide, because you know, it's when it comes out of your ta your check, it's pre-tax, so a one hundred dollar withholding is really, you still get, you know, it's only twenty dollars less than that. You get eighty dollars take remove, reduce from your check, but you'd have to pay us the whole hundred without that tax advantage.
Right.
I really can't say it enough. His his mail merge is beautiful. There's you do not walk away with a question when you when you see it. It's I, it's mind-boggling to me.
Could we uh, we don't need to know specific dollar amounts uh for any individual employees, but could we get an example for that in the in the communications that an example that would go to the uh staff tomorrow morning?
Yeah, I forwarded um a PDF with nobody's name on it. Just two examples are in that PDF. One with a person that qualifies and one for a person that um it doesn't necessarily benefit. Um, so I had sent that to Nikki, so you'll receive it in your email, I'm sure, by tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Patty.
And then if for some reason the federal money went away, the three hundred dollars went away, we would revisit this entire situation, because we're banking a lot on that being available.
And you're, that's not out of the realm of possibility, because there's, say, fifty billion allocated, which sounds.
Nothing's out of the realm of possibility.
Yeah, it's it's all in the realm of possibility. Yep.
Okay, cool. So we would revisit.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually updated the FAQ even today with, you know, at first we had a no in there. Um, but then we put it out kind of a except if the district calls you back. Um, so that would give a safeguard if, let's just say, too many people had taken the furlough and we found out that we could not operate successfully without um the amount, let's just say, for example, it's secretaries. Um, that also gives us the flexibility that if um it's no longer beneficial for the employees, then we can ask them to return to work.
Anyone have any?
No, I'll I'll just say, you know, this has been a very difficult conversation for all of us to have. Um, and this did not come lightly uh to this point. So um, thank you to everyone's efforts and um making this be able still to be a voluntary furlough that's temporary at this time.
Anyone have any further questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Patty and Mike and Kim and Brian. Appreciate your input on this and we will obviously stay tuned, do a lot of different things. Um, so with that in mind, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for a special meeting uh next Tuesday, August twenty-fifth at seven thirty AM. Uh, this meeting will be a virtual meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, the next anticipated close session will be held on September sixteenth, twenty twenty. Details of the close session will be posted within twenty-four hours of the anticipated meeting. Uh, we uh next I have adjournment. So may I have uh a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Don't move. Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all very much. Thank you all for uh watching.